Good evening. Welcome. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on Monday, December 4th. I am Select Board Chair Eric Helmoth. Tonight's meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format, consistent with provisions by the Massachusetts Legislature for remote participation in public meetings. Before we begin, please note the following. First, this meeting is being conducted in the Select Board chambers and over Zoom. It is being recorded and simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. Second, persons wishing to join the meeting by Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. People participating either in person or by Zoom are reminded that you may be visible to others, and that if you wish to participate, we ask you to provide your full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. Third, all participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment. Those persons are not asked to identify themselves. Both Zoom participants and people watching on ACMI can follow the posted agenda materials found on the town's website, specifically the Select Board Agendas and Minutes page. Tonight at the meeting, there will be several opportunities for public comment. If you are participating by Zoom and you want to participate in that public comment period at the time that I announce it, please raise your hand in Zoom when I announce the public comment is open. If you're in the room, obviously raise your hand. In the room, it's even easier. If you do not know how to raise your hand in Zoom, now would be an excellent time to Google for how to do so. Let's see how much of the town's business we can get done tonight. First item on the agenda is to review and approve bond issue and related matters, specifically award the sale of the $18 million and $90,000 in general obligation municipal purpose loan, and all related documents required to execute the sale. And we have with us Ms. Julie Wayman, our treasurer. Good evening.
That's okay. Good evening. So, just last week, we sold $18 million in bonds for a number of capital projects. I'm sure you all know that we work with Hilltop Securities, and they worked with us on this sale. They let us know that we had an excellent result. We had 11 bids, and they were telling us that a number of municipalities have only had between three and five bids, so they were really pleased with our 11. And the result was, we ended up, Fidelity Capital Markets was the winning bidder, and the interest rate is 3.69% over the life of the bonds. So, they were really pleased, very happy for us. This borrowing includes $10 million in exempt debt, so that's for the high school project, and then about four, a little over four and a half million for the DPW, along with a number of smaller capital projects, a couple of trucks. We've got the Bishop School roof replacement. You know, we've got a number of smaller capital projects that are approved annually. You know, as you all know, we've got that annual capital plan, and so we've got a number of smaller projects. So, for a total of a little over eight million in non-exempt debt, and then about 10 in exempt debt. So, we're very, very pleased, happy with the results, and we hope that you all will vote favorably for the sale.
Thank you very much. We do have a proposed vote before us in our agenda materials, and I'll turn to the board for questions, comments, and motions. Mrs. Mahan?
I will make a motion. Just a tickle. Just a quick question.
Please.
Are we voting the bonds of 1890 or the 17290?
Let's vote the 1890, and then there's the 900,000 in premium. So, yes, the ultimate cost to us will be 17 million, but we're going to vote the full. I think the language does suggest that full 18 million in that vote.
Oh, it does, but I saw the 922,000, which brought it down to 17290.
It does, yes. Yep, but we'd like to vote the full 18 million.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Just wanted to check.
Yes.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the sum of $18 million and $90,000 in general obligation municipal purpose loans for our 2023 bonds.
Second. Yeah, Mr. Hurd may have seconded. Okay. Yeah, no, thank you, Ms. Wayman, and congratulations on the AAA bond rating, and it is nice to see 11 bids, because I think last year, at this time, there was only four bids for the issuance a year ago, and the interest rate effectively is a little bit less than it was a year ago, which is, which is nice, too. So, that probably comes out of the bidding process. So, 3.7 versus 3.77, but we'll take it.
We'll take it. We're very happy with it, and I think we, you know, heard really positive feedback from Hilltop, so, yeah, I think that was excellent.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dickens?
Mr. Corsi actually asked my question, because I was wondering about the comparison in either. And I'd heard that munis were becoming, well, being viewed favorably against, so this is kind of evidence of that, you know. And so, so the overall market is good for them, and I think we're benefiting, you know, from just our high bond rating. So, so thank you very much. I am not going to ask the curiosity question that happened. I will, I will call you about it directly, but, and then, I mean, my favorite part about this is seeing the S and P report, you know. So, one of these days, I'll throw it into a word cloud and see how they all compare, but great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dickens. Any further discussion? Okay. On a motion to approve by Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is unanimous. Thank you for your good work. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reese.
Yes. Thank you, Reese. Next item is, for approval, special event request, menorah lighting at Woodmore Park on December the 12th of this year. And I believe we have representative, we have representative here or on Zoom to address. Let's see if Ms. Mark can check Zoom. Nobody in the room?
I don't see the applicant's name, but if there's somebody there, that would raise their hand on behalf?
Yeah, if you're on Zoom and you are appearing on behalf of this, please raise your hand in Zoom at this time.
Seeing no hands, Reese.
Okay. Well, I think we could either take this up later this evening, or just approve it, subject to the conditions in the permit. Mrs. Mahan?
I'd like to move approval of the special event request for December 12, 2023, subject to all conditions contained therein.
I'll second it.
And then if someone does come later?
Yeah. Yeah, then they would welcome them to speak about and help promote their event. Sure.
Sorry. I see them, that they've just logged in.
Okay, sure, yeah, we'll give them a minute. Oh, yeah, there we go.
Promote them.
Yes. Yes.
Sorry.
Great. We moved with uncharacteristic speed in the first part of our meeting.
I held back.
Let's keep it going.
That's right. So, our board administrator is, there we go. There we go. Good evening. You can unmute yourself and turn your camera on if you like. Ah, there we go. Good evening, Rabbi.
Hi, how are you?
Good to see you.
Am I, am I the first on the docket?
You are. Nearly. We, after, after we approved the sale of $18 million in bonds, a small matter. So, yeah, no, you're up. Of course, the community knows and appreciates you and your, and your center's work very much, but if you'd like to briefly describe the event, the board would be happy to, to consider it.
Sure. So, I, I know this is something new that we haven't approached the town officially yet with, but in light of, of current events, what's going on across the world, and the impact that it's having on, on many people in the Jewish community that have been impacted and affected personally. We were wondering, we had, the, the holiday of Hanukkah is coming up in a, in a few days on this upcoming Thursday, and it's an eight-day holiday, and we were wondering if we could ask permission from, from you, from the town of Arlington, to have a menorah, which is a symbol of, of light, lightness in darkness, and it's, it's something that we believe is, is beyond just, you know, just Jewish tradition, but it's more of a Jewish cultural symbol that, that is, that is beautiful and, and warm, that lights up the public on, on these eight days of Hanukkah. And we were hoping to see if that would be something that you may consider for us to set up a nine-foot menorah. It will automatically, with bulbs, and will automatically, each, you know, be, each candle would, each bulb would light up every 24 hours until the eighth day of Hanukkah. And we were hoping that that would be something, it could be on any public property. I don't have in front of me, I believe we asked, we asked for it to be placed on the green that is in front of the, the museum there on, on Mass Ave and Pleasant Street. But it's really, it's just anywhere on Mass Ave in a, in a convenient place. We thought that might, that might be something, a nice, a symbol of hope and light. And so, that's, that's what I'm asking permission for, and I would, we would greatly appreciate if that's something that can, that could happen this year.
Thank you very much, and I neglected to ask you to introduce yourself, even though you're well-known to us. If you would do that for the public, please, for the record.
Sure, sure. My, my name is Avi Booket. I am the Executive Director and Rabbi at the Center for Jewish Life here in Arlington. We've been serving the Jewish community in Arlington for over 10 years. We have, as many of you know, we have experienced, we've experienced a hate crime multiple times in 2019 from, from a white supremacist, white supremacist group. And then, of course, what has, what has happened over the past couple of months, many of our Jewish community members have been impacted. Many of our, many of our teenagers who are in the community have been at school, and, and the remarks and the comments, there's been a lot of, a lot of sentiment, anti-Semitic sentiment, anti-Israel sentiment. And I just, I felt this was an appropriate time to come to the town and perhaps, you know, bring up this idea, this proposal.
Thank you very much. So, I just, I want to just get some clarity on, on the application, so that the, the event permit application that we have on our agenda that was published and before us now is just for a one-day, a one-time event of three, two or three hours on December the 12th. So, I think that the board will have to contemplate, you know, if we would want to make any change to that, to, I think, if I'm interpreting the request, it would be, you know, not an attended event, but would be an unintended display appearing, you know, over a period of time, and that's, you know, probably, that's a different kind of request, I think, than, than we have here.
Oh, oh, okay. So, I might be confused here. So, my, the executive, the, the Director of Programming filled out the application. That, it could be that, that, that request was for, we have, we've been having an annual menorah lighting at the Arlington Fire Department. We have like a gelt drop, and it's attended by hundreds of people in the community, Jewish people and non-Jewish people alike, and it's been a very big hit, and the fire department has been amazing. And we typically just, we like the menorah with the firemen, with the chief of, the fire, the, the fire chief for, for an hour or so. We take, we, we put the menorah together, take it apart, and we're done.
Right.
So, perhaps that was the original request. What I'm, what I'm asking is obviously for, for something, for something longer that we could just leave there, and, and, and it could be shown, it could be on, you know, in public display for, for eight days.
But you would still, you're still asking for the, for the permit to do the, the initial event that's
Yes.
Was, has been at the, near the fire station, is now asked for in Woodmore Park, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Yeah, okay. Thank you for that, for, thank you for that clarity. I think I'm going to turn to Attorney Cunningham, because we did, this was something that we, we discussed, and I think we, we wanted to be sure to kind of be prepared to help the board think through what the options were. So, Attorney Cunningham, if you would like to offer some, some context, some, some advice about these different requests, I think the board would appreciate that before we begin deliberating.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair. Michael Cunningham, Town Counsel. This request, the one we have that before the board was part of the materials, was just for the one night for two hours. But to the extent there is a request before the board orally at this stage for something beyond that, I could just go into briefly what that type of request involves. The First Amendment is plainly at issue here. This is an open forum, specifically the property in front of the Cutter House. So, the public has some right to meet there, express views, various other activities. But the government can place reasonable time, time, place, and manner restrictions on those activities, subject to significant government interest, and if, as long as it's narrowly tailored. The concern that I think that this might raise, to the extent that it was an eight-day period with an unattended menorah, is that that may give the impression to a reasonable person that, that's some sort of government speech, that the Establishment Clause would be implicated in that case. It's similar to a case that the Town of Lexington Select Board considered in 2001, where they had an application from the Knights of Columbus, who wanted to set up a creche for a three-week period. The board, after approving that for many years on the battleground, decided that that was an inappropriate amount of time, and was going to allow them a one-day permit to, to construct the creche, but not allow it to remain unattended. The Knights of Columbus didn't like that result. They sued. It went to the First Circuit. The Town of, Town of Lexington's actions were affirmed by the, by the District Court in Massachusetts. That's still good law today. I think there are some legitimate concerns about any unattended structure for whatever, whether it's religious or secular, because the reason for that is not only a potential violation by the town, the Establishment Clause, but also, these types of regulations have to be content neutral. So, to the extent that this board would consider allowing an eight-day permit for one group, that would, that would have to apply to other groups that would come before this board. You cannot discriminate based on content. So, in that case, Lexington faced requests from various groups, you know, whether it was, I think there was a Jewish faith group, I think there was a Christian faith group, there was a group related to the sun god Ra, that, so there, there would have been a collection of items unattended on that particular area, which affected the aesthetic value of that public property, and the court considered that, wanted to determine whether that was a significant government interest. And that considered in conjunction with the concerns about the Establishment Clause, the court determined that the Select Board action in Lexington was appropriate in denying that application. So, I think those, those are the issues that the, that the board should consider, as it looks at a prolonged period or an unattended item on this public ground.
Thank you, sir. I'd ask the town manager if he had any further thoughts or comments in this before the board begins the discussion.
You know, thank you, Mr. Chair. Jim Feeney, Town Manager. You know, I would, I think the board grappled with a related challenge pertaining to the flying of banners on this very building in the, the near future. So, I think that, you know, in thinking back, though, I, I didn't sit in this chair at that time, I understood that the board made a sort of hard decision to discontinue that practice at that time, given the concerns that Attorney Cunningham laid out as to setting, you know, locking yourself into future precedent with decisions that may be presented before the board. So, I just wanted to raise that as a somewhat related matter.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. Oh, sorry, Ms. Mahan, yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to let Rabbi Booket know that right before you zoomed in, I did make a motion to approve the December 12th request. And I, that would remain my motion for the December 12th request. Everyone knows I'm a process person. I'm not going to repeat what Town Counsel or Town Manager said, but I know approximately 15 or so years ago, the board, and this is before the last year policy statement, made a policy that any unattended events, that, that we would only do events, one-day events. And there was quite a bit of concern, because for many, many years, we had had a nativity scene at the exact same site, and we directed that group to go to an appropriate church that had volunteered, several had, to host that. So, so it's a process question. I'd like to stay with that. So, I'd just stand by my motion to approve the December 12, 2023 event request.
Mr. Hurd?
I have a follow-up question for Attorney Cunningham. Is there any open meeting law considerations for us even to consider something outside the four corners of the request that's in front of us?
Potentially, Mr. Hurd, but I think most likely the board has the discretion to edit its, if they wanted to accept the edited request, it could do so at this time, because the issue related to the placement of a menorah at this particular site, although not for this time period, was on the agenda appropriately within 48 hours of the meeting. However, I think it's probably best practice for the board to not engage in that type of process, as I think Mrs. Mahan is talking about. I think the best practice for the board, and it's up, again, it's up to the board, not to me, is to consider the materials it has before it at the time of the meeting.
Yeah. Well, I'll certainly second the motion. I'm happy to support the event. You know, we've been through this with, I feel like, a myriad of issues with limited public forum in the past couple of years. We have a very proactive citizenship or residence that have a whole host of causes that are really important to people in this town. And I think, while I certainly support the putting up a menorah, I would love to see that. I think it would be a beautiful sight to see, particularly in these times. I think it's really an important practice for this board to stick to just allowing individual attended events. And I would anticipate that if we approved leaving a menorah up for eight days, in our next meeting, we'll have anywhere from 10 to 20 requests to put something else in Woodmore Plaza. And as Attorney Cunningham mentioned, we really have no, once we approve one, we really have no discretion to say no to anything else. So, I think as a best practice, it just, it's in the interest of the town to stick to our current practice of just approving limited engagements that are attended by individuals, as opposed to permanent structures.
So, I will, I will give Mr. Hurd the second. So, and, so, and, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll add, I mean, I see that no police detail, is, that box isn't checked. You know, I would say, I'm sure that we are going to make sure it's a safe event, me, whether or not, you know, that box is checked, me, but to the extent, we, we need to consider that a little more, I mean, then let's do, so that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Feeney?
Thank you, Jim Feeney, Town Manager. Yes, Mr. Dickens, we would ensure that any and all necessary security was provided for the event, and I know that the Arlington Police Department works closely with the Rabbi and his team.
Great. Thanks. Mr. Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I support Mrs. Mahan's motion, and this was what was before us this evening, and for the best practices that Attorney Cunningham spoke about as well. So, I just support the, the vote in a second.
Thank you. And, you know, I'll do the same, and I want to be very clear that, you know, this really is, the board's responsibility is to think about the big picture, to think about precedent, to think about what could happen next, and not to make these decisions because of any lack of, of support and empathy for what the Rabbi's community is going through right now. That's the furthest thing from our minds. I think that we just, we have the responsibility to, to really protect the entire community and think ahead about, about the big context of these decisions. So, I am also comfortable with, with that, and also just, just out of an abundance of caution, given what we did notice on the agenda for this being a one-time event, I think that's the better practice this year. So, any further discussion from the board? Okay, so we have a motion by Mrs. Mahan, and an inherited second by Mr. Hurd. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is unanimous. I look forward to the event. Good luck.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, your consideration.
Thank you very much, sir. Good evening. That brings us to the consent agenda. We have items four through seven, the minutes of the meetings of November 8th, the Arlington Education Foundation 5K race on May 19, 2024. And I'll just note, this is on this consent agenda, because it's very similar, if not identical, to the conditions that we approved last year. Approval for winter banners from the Chamber of Commerce, and a request for contractor drain layer license, Genesis Utilities Corporation in Brockton, Massachusetts, specifically Declan Fitzpatrick. I'll turn to the board for any motions or comments.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda items? Seeing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous, 5-0. That brings us to a row of assessors. We have a property tax classification, so we have to figure out what we're doing with who's speaking and who's standing and who's sitting. ACMI has asked that if they're standing, move the microphone up. If we're sitting, move it down. You all sort that out. I think we have the Chair here and the Director of Assessments. So, who's, who's representing? Chair Jameson?
We'll start and we'll move along from there.
Great, well, sir, welcome.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Helmoth. I'm Gordon Jameson. I'm the current Chair of the Board of Assessors of Arlington, and we are here for the annual tax classification hearing, a meeting that I have attended many years before becoming a member of the board, and it's, I think, one of the most important sessions that the, that the board, the boards together hold. Joined with me, joining me tonight before the board are, are talented Director of Assessments Dana Mann, and the other two, and also equally talented members of the board, William Sagata, Bill Sagata, and Mary Wynn Stanley O'Connor, who you've all seen before in previous sessions. This is my time, this is my year to have to do this, song and dance. So, so basically, the, the end result of tonight's meeting is, you'll be voting for a tax rate and for voting for a factor, and we've provided a, the Director has provided you with a, the annual set of information, and I'll leave it with Mr. Mann to take you through that. And after he's concluded, he and the board will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Welcome, Mr. Mann. And, yeah, just bend the microphone down. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Dana Mann, Director of Assessments. Thank you for your time this evening. Does everyone have a copy of the assessment?
Yes, thank you.
If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to start by recognizing the other three members of the assessing team. Our manager, Mary McMakin, Jennifer O'Rourke, and Mitchell Suarez. I couldn't do this without them. And hello to our Town Manager, Town Counsel, Ashley. We can, we're going to start by discussing what, what makes up the tax rate. We're going to go through some of the components. We're going to look at what the single tax rate is. We're going to discuss the options behind classification. We, classification presents an opportunity to shift parts of the levy, which would create different tax rates for different classes of property. We'll then go to discussing the two other options related to classification, and then we'll look at the actual numbers for this year, the value of the, of the town. And then we will conclude by looking at what changed from, from last year to this year. And please, if there are any questions, please don't hesitate to interrupt, and I'm happy to address any of your questions. So, starting on page one, and the pages are numbered this year.
It just gets better and better, sir.
So, to calculate the, the tax rate, we look back to last year, and we take the fiscal year '23 levy limit. We add to that 2.5% for Proposition 2.5. That's the $3,383,913 number. We add to that new growth. This is, growth would be the value of new property to the town. town that we're taxing for the first time. We would then, this year, we, we don't have an override, thanks to some proper budgeting. We'll push that to next year. And that develops a, the fiscal year 2024 levy limit, 140,020,933. We take that number and add the excluded debt, in this case, it's school debt, of 13,830,576. And that gives us what's called the maximum total to be raised. That's the 153,800, I'm sorry, 153,851,509 number. And at the bottom, we give the actual calculation for the tax rate. We take the amount to be raised, actually, we take the total taxable assessed value. That's 14,523,850,398. And we divide that by the amount to be raised, the 153,807,575, and divided by 1,000, and that gives us a tax rate, a single tax rate of $10.59. The difference between the maximum total to be raised and the amount to be raised is called the excess levy of $43,934. So moving to page two, we look at the current makeup of the town in terms of class, class of property. And once again, the, the town is significantly residential. The residential property comes in at 94.6555%. The total, what's called CPI, commercial, industrial, and personal property, comes out to 5.3445%. And you can see the makeup of the individual classes there. Turning to the next page, we are provided with some numbers by the DOR, which gives us the, the target numbers where we're allowed to shift some of the tax levy either direction, but generally it's increasing the CIP levy and decreasing the residential levy. But it's, it's, it's an option. So the number, the number that we want to look at there is the minimum residential factor, 97.4766. That lets us calculate the minimum residential shear. That's the number below that, 91.98. And from those numbers, we move to page four. And this is what gives us the range within which amounts can be shifted. The, what's called the CIP maximum shear is calculated at 8.0168%. The single rate shear is 5.3445. So that, those are the two numbers within which we can shift. And on the next page, at the bottom of the page, we see the totals. These, CIP shear of levy, this is the amount of the tax levy that's borne by the CIP. And the maximum CIP is the 12,330,510. So within that levy amount is the, the shift opportunity. And on page five, we see what, what that shift would, would do to taxes and tax rates. So if we follow along, at the top, the top line is what a single tax rate would do. And then if we were to move 5%, you can see the effect that that has on the tax rate. The tax rate moves on the residential side by $10.56, down to $10.56. And on the CIP side, $11.12. And that would mean a difference, a reduction in the residential tax amount of $14.95 compared with a increase in the CIP tax. And this is per $500,000 of value. That increase would be $265 on the CIP side. So a significant disproportionality in that amount. And then you can follow down that chart, the various other percentages. Any questions on that? Okay. Also, within the classification options is what's called the residential exemption. This is an option that's used by cities and towns in the, in the Commonwealth that have a large percentage of non-owner occupied properties, where they would see an advantage compared to owner occupied properties with higher values. I want to stress that the levy does not change in, in these circumstances. The difference in the tax rate is to bear the, the, the cost of providing the exemption to owner occupied properties. And it's generally done in communities where there's a large investment pool, where investors are buying property and renting property, or in properties or towns that have a large non-resident or second home property ownership. The DOR has allowed the maximum exemption amount of 35%. Very few communities move up to that, that level. I've provided some examples of what this exemption would look like at various exemption amounts. And it's in a percentage form here. You can see the 20% amount would create a tax rate for the entire residential class of $12.70. And that would be borne by a fairly small percentage of non-resident properties. We calculate that at about 17%. We also calculated what's called the break even point. This is the home value where a qualified resident would see no impact on their tax bill. Values above that amount, even though they're qualified, will, would see an increase in their taxes. And properties under that would realize some discount. Any questions on the residential exemption? The small business exemption, which is another option under classification, would be very similar. The tax rate would be $10.85. I'm sorry, that's not in your, in your booklet, but we, we did calculate that. Moving on to page seven, we see a history of the single tax rates for the town. And on page eight, often referred to as the LA4, which has been submitted to the DOR and awaiting our certification, we see all of the values related to all of the different classes or property types on the left-hand side, and their total values moving to the right of the form. And at the, at the very bottom, in the bottom right corner, we see the real and personal property total value. This is the total taxable value of the town, 14,523,850,398. On page nine, we have what's referred to as the LA13. This describes and indicates the abatement amounts that were, that were allowed by the board in the various property classes. And that would be column B. In column C, what we have is the new growth that was generated in each of those classes. And the totals are listed at the bottom of the page. Column E is the total growth amount for the town. That's that $1,280,500. We saw that on the first page. Okay, this is, this is a little more fun, at least for me. Moving to page 10. We can see what we, what we did in producing values for this year and how it is different from last year. So we start with the single family, class code 101. Values in that category increased by 11.26%. And I, I think we've all seen that in the sales. The assessing department looked at over 730 sales to develop these values within DOR standards. I say that just to indicate the amount of work that goes into producing these value numbers. We don't, we don't just look at Caldwell Banker and come up with a number. So I won't go through all of these numbers, but you'll see, in total, the, all classes are up 9.1%. And you can see the residential is slightly higher at 9.29%. And then at the bottom of the, of the page, it gives the actual totals for each class.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I know all the codes stand for various residential and commercial properties. And I wouldn't expect you to know this off the top of your head, but just, all of them seem incrementally similar. I'm just curious, and it's close to 12%, so that's near the 9%. What code 504, 550 to 552 is?
Sure. 504 is utilities that are actually valued by the state.
Okay.
So that would be things like N-Star, electrical utilities, gas utilities. And, yeah, 504, 504, you said?
Yes. Thank you. No, only because the rest, I could see what's commercial space, open space, residential. And that was the one percentage-wise that had sort of the biggest jump. And I was like, well, what the heck is that? Utilities, that's a big jump. Thank you.
Yeah. And it's, it's also, it's, it's, we've always assessed the utilities. But recently, the DOR has enacted a different method for calculating value. They're looking at it a little bit differently. And so far, it has produced higher values. So we've seen for the last three, three years, significant growth in that area.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mann. Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Any other questions on that? So this page is, is similar to the first page, but it gives us some good percentages. This is page 11. And we can see, year over year, going back to fiscal year 2020, the various components of the tax rate. What I'd like to point out, you can see that the, under Proposition 2.5, the amount of that value and its effect on the tax rate has decreased. And that's due to the increase, the overall increase in values. So as values go up, we're spreading that amount over a larger value. The other thing I'd like to point out is the levy increase percentage. That's about in the middle of the page there, 3.33%. That's before taking into account the exempted school debt. This is not in your booklets, but when you, when you consider that increase after the debt exclusion, it's approximately 5.1%.
So that, that 3.33 would be the 2.5% plus new growth?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And finally, I want to, I want to point out the average assessed value of the single family homes in Arlington. We've broken the million dollar mark, and the average single family home is now valued at $1,015,162. And you can see how that's grown from 2020, when we were at 825,000. Significant growth in residential properties. Now, how does that affect the average tax rate or tax bill? The average tax bill this year at the single tax rate of $10.59 is $10,751. That's an increase of $523 over the previous year. And just a reminder that all of these numbers are subject to rounding and DOR certification. On the next page, we get to compare that tax bill to what we call our peer communities. Unfortunately, I was not able to get the data for these communities as they, they only recently Winchester did have their rate approved on Friday. But I was unable to get that data into the report. But I will, as soon as we get that information, we'll get it into this form. And it, it's located on the assessor's website. So just pointing out quickly, the new average tax bill for the town is the $10,751. And just a note, that does not include the CPA tax, significantly lower than our three peer communities, who last year were all over $16,000.
For the benefit of people at home in, in the room, this material, all this materials are available on the Select Board's Agenda and Minutes page, but I'll just name that the- the three comparable towns here are Belmont, Winchester, and Lexington, and they are all over six to six or seven thousand dollars more than we were last year.
Thank you.
Mr. Dickens, do you have a sense of how we compare, you know, for CIP?
In other words, the average tax bill for commercial, industrial? So we can look at that.
Yeah, for the other communities? Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
Okay. All right. That's what I was getting at, for the other communities. Okay. All right, thank you.
I, I can, I can certainly get that information on the, on the booklet and for future classification hearings.
Okay, great, great, because it'd be interesting, yeah.
Yeah.
To have a sense of whether or not we're competitive and what potential effects that have, because that could also mean since the, the balance can be tipped in either direction, I mean, you could imagine that a short, a very small increase mean in, you know, the property for, for non-CIP could have a really big effect on them. And if it was made us more competitive, then that could be an argument. That's why I asked. All right, thank you.
Very good.
Mr. Hurd?
Thank you for the presentation. It's always good to get these numbers once a year and get reminded why we don't have residential exemption, why we don't have a two-tiered tax system. One question that came up early in the presentation, and after six presentations of this, I probably should have asked this five years ago, but what accounts for the excess levy in that, I understand it's, we're asking for less than the maximum total that we can raise? Is that just a budgeting issue or?
No.
Where we always talk about the constraints of proposition two and a half, you would think that you would ask for the dollar figure exactly of what you're, what you can ask for.
Sure. So if we look at page eleven, we produce a number called the penny on the tax rate. And you see that amount is a hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. If we were to increase our levy, it would, we can't have a tax rate with three decimal points.
Right.
So we're, 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 we're actually levying as much as we can, and that excess means we can't add another penny to the tax rate.
That makes sense. Again, thank you for the presentation. I think every year, not only does it remind us why our taxes are what they are, it shows us, you know, what we need to do. I know Mr. Dickens likes to talk about new growth, and, you know, new growth is really the key to stopping overrides, and these are the figures that show this to us. But it also does show, if you look to, at the comparable towns, it shows that we've always say we get a lot of bang for our buck, you know, there. And I think some of these towns have higher property values, but Arlington's certainly getting in the mix when it comes to property value. And they all have similar services. Interestingly, the same four towns that were in the Arlington Winter Classic, the hockey tournament last year. Winchester won.
I was gonna say, don't say who won. It was Arlington, McCord.
It just jumped off the page when I saw these four towns. But again, you know, we have significantly lower taxes for similar, if not better, services than the cities and towns around us. And that's something to be proud of, and that's good administration, good fiscal management from the top down. And, you know, it's always good to look at that, and it makes you feel a little bit better when, as taxes go up. So, thank you for all your work. Thank you to the board for all the work that goes in all year on these valuations. And it's all, you know, we like to say we take a lot of heat, but I know the Board of Assessors can take some heat from some residents as well. I mean, no one wants to go out and get taxed higher, but we do thank you for all the work that you do to put this together each year.
Absolutely.
And I'll remind the board, as we continue our discussion, at some point, we'll need a motion for setting the tax rate. Mr. Corsi, did you want to go?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Mr. Mann, for the presentation and to the members of the Board of Assessors for being here this evening. And as Mr. Hurd said, it's always very informative. And I'd really love to pour, pour through all of this. Just a question, and maybe for an observation, it's, I know your count on condominium units has gone up by about eighty-two units. The number two-family units has gone down by about forty. Is that what you're seeing for conversions?
Exactly. We had just that amount of, of conversions. I think there was also one, three-family that converted to two condominiums. But that's exactly what those numbers show.
Okay. And, and then on the, the one twelve, the one eleven to one twenty-five, but one twelves in particular, which is apartments, eight units or, or greater, I see that's up by one. Is that the My rec, is that the beginning of the My rec development? And I don't know, it seems like we'll have some growth this year, but perhaps more in fiscal twenty-five from that project as well?
Yeah, exactly. So we're required by the DOR to assess the percentage completion on projects like that as of July one, I'm sorry, July thirty-first.
Okay.
We have to have that percentage of, of completion. And we determine a, a, a full market value, and we take that percentage of completion as the assessment amount and the growth, the growth amount from that.
Okay. And, and again, you, we don't know what growth is going to be like next year. It seems like you have a few things, I know Mr. Feeney had said, building permits are, are down more recently, and that usually gets reflected a year or two out, but you've, you've actually achieved more than a million dollars in growth the past two years. And I know it's a lot of pressure. Hopefully, you can find another similar amount or a little bit growth there, but that's, that's just encouragement, and hopefully, there's enough activity. Just two more comments, if I could, Mr. Chairman. On the tax rate, and I think, and this is reflective of values going up in Arlington, by the table you put in here, the ten fifty-nine is the lowest tax rate I think we've ever had since it's been reported, ten sixty-one back in two thousand and four. So again, that just shows that relationship between value in, in tax rates, because we're going to grow two and a half percent, but, but values are continuing, continuing to rise here. And the last thing I would say is on the exempt count, and thank you, it looks like there's been a real large increase in the value of exempt property, which we don't receive any revenue on, but it looks like it's about seven percent of, of the overall, which I think compared to some other communities is probably on the low side. But it's, it's always helpful just to see that relationship. So thank you for the comprehensive presentation and for all the data.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mann, but by adopting a single rate, we will, what the motion would be is to adopt a residential factor of one. And we're not going to do anything on the resident, I'm not moving anything on the residential exemption. We don't have small business exemption, so just that single vote, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Mr. Dickens? I had a couple of questions. I mean, I have my fingers up because I saw Mr. Mann leaving, and it's like.
Oh, yeah.
So, so quickly, is, is there a pattern to the new growth?
That's a difficult question. There are several factors. There's the, the general economy that you would consider. There's zoning issues can have an impact on growth. But yeah, we, we tend to follow a general pattern of the economy. People are investing in Arlington. They're, they're adding to their homes, they're, they're building new homes, and all of that generates growth.
So, so, but it's, it's individuals investing, not the corporations or anything like that?
Well, we, we do have growth in, in all of our class, well, not, not all, but in, in the commercial end as well as the residential side.
Okay. And actually, what I was getting at is, in terms of the residential investment, that's from individuals opposed to companies, I mean.
Yeah, what I mean by investment in Arlington is the interest in, in buying houses in Arlington is generating competition, which raises the value of the homes. And, and interest in the new homes that are being built and in increasing those values, which in turn increases growth.
Gotcha. And the reason I was asking about that is, is I think MAPC just recently released a study being on speculation, being, and, and for them, I mean, the speculation is, is, they define that as investing or investors. And so I was just trying to understand, I mean, if we're talking about the same type of, of things. So I'm just trying, you get what I'm getting?
Yeah, I do. And I wouldn't classify it as, I, I think we're using the same term a little bit differently.
I know, that was confusing when they did that. It's like, people are like, what do you mean? You know, I mean, so, so, okay, great. And, and I would be interested in the, the data on the small business exemptions. I mean, that's, is that on the website, or is that something I have to ask you for?
No, I think, I can provide you with those figures.
Okay, great.
And then we'll, we'll look at incorporating it in the.
Yeah.
In the booklet in the coming years.
Not to even remotely affect, I mean, my feelings about the motion, you know. All right, thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Thank you very much. Thank you to the board for your service to the community. It is extremely important. And, Mr. Mann, your excellent work is known by reputation and demonstrated tonight. So thank you very much. So we have a motion to adopt.
Is this a public hearing?
Yeah. Oh, it is a public hearing.
Sorry.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. This is a public hearing. So if anyone would like to, before we vote to set the tax rate, make a public comment. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand on this item, or if you're in the room, please, your room, raise your hand in the room. Okay, I think we're good. So on a motion by Mr. Corsi to set the tax rate with a residential factor of one, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so five, nothing unanimous vote. Thank you very much. Thanks for all. All right. Also, a public hearing, we have the Montague Street Betterment Request to Repair Private Ways, a Betterment Order. And we have representative here in the room or on Zoom to briefly talk about that. Welcome. Come on up.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. Just introduce yourself, sir, and give us a, a quick rundown. We have the documents in front of us.
Sure. Julio Mascheranes, resident in ninety-nine Montague Street. Nice to meet you, everyone. Representing our neighbors, trying to fix our street as much as we can. We started the process, we followed all the procedures, and now I think we're kind of in the last stages of getting the town's approval to fix at least short-term our potholes, and then long-term, the first part, the lower part of Montague. And then we're waiting for the technical, for the towns to give us the technical details for the upper part of Montague to see if we can fix it as well.
Gotcha. Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, motions from the board before we, actually, let's do public comment. If you want to do public comment first? Yeah. We'll go ahead to the public hearing. Looks to me that we have, there were no objections that I noted in this, but nevertheless, it is a public hearing. So if you are here, wish, in the room or on Zoom, wish to comment on this betterment before the board discusses, please raise your hand. Okay? Seeing none, Mr. Hurd?
I'm happy to move approval. I just have a question for the town manager, similar to the betterment request that we had a couple of months ago. Do we have to make a motion subject to availability of funds?
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. That would be correct if the project were to proceed before July first.
Okay.
But we would expect, given Town Meeting's action, that as of July first, that that would not be an issue.
Okay. So I'll move approval, subject to availability of funds, if the project is to proceed prior to July first.
Second? Oh, sorry.
I don't know if, for the applicant, if the town manager just wants to briefly explain what the issue is with that.
Sure.
Sure. And thank you for raising that point. I actually, you know, have been in touch with some of the folks from Montague Street about exactly the same thing. But given the large number of betterments that have processed through the board, and as you know, you know, many folks choose to pay upfront for that, but there's, you know, at least a handful every time around that do not, so we're not collecting those funds until quarterly payments are received over the course of five years. So it takes, we can tend to deplete the account faster than it replenishes with collections, unless and until the town, through Town Meeting, takes an action to sort of cede that account with money. And with the number of betterments that we processed, and the size of some of those betterments this year, we've sort of stretched beyond what we could afford. And this fiscal year, unless, of course, the residents were able to provide additional funding beyond the one-third required upfront, and as was done with the last betterment that approved, so that it could proceed on a faster timeline.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, yes, sir.
So what would be that minimum threshold to get above the, say, it's like two-thirds, fifty percent?
As of today, I calculate it around fifty-five or sixty-five percent. But that changes really almost on a daily basis as to when the board's office would receive payments via mail.
Okay. And I'm assuming nothing can be done before April, even if we?
The moratorium would be in effect through middle of April anyways.
Thank you.
I think we had a second for Mrs. Mahan. Mr. Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I will say, and Mr. Hurd noted this, it's nice to have a private way betterment request that's unanimous. And as everybody responded, said yes, as one person didn't. But just for clarification, what, what portion of the street, you said it's not the entire street? I'm just curious, what, what section will be done as a result of this?
So it's, we're trying to do everything. But it's taking me a while to get my neighbors from, let's call it, Upper Montague.
Okay.
To say yes or approve the process in, in mind. So it's from Madison, sorry, from Orient to Madison.
Okay.
We do have the signatures to start the upper part of Montague, but we're waiting for the, from the engineering department to give us the technical details.
Okay.
So we can send it to the paving companies for them to give us a quote. If this only starts in April, maybe by then we can have a full Montague fixed, because as my neighbor Anton is there, he will attest, there's a huge problem coming from Upper Montague, so to speak. There's a pothole that comes from beneath the water and creates like a, an ice rink in his house. So we would like to have that fixed as soon as possible. If we cannot, cannot have the full Montague, at least fifty percent of Montague fixed.
Okay, thank you. And if I could, based on that answer, Mr. Chairman, a big question for Attorney Cunningham is, on the order, should we be putting the parameters of, of, of the work in terms of what, what portion of the street?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, and we've already had the motion for, maybe as a friendly amendment, to, to add Montague Street between, right, for right now, between Orient and Madison.
So a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. Mr. Dickens? So I'll notice that the, the one person that's missing lives at zero Montague. So I think, I think it's the title. So, 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 I was thinking, I've never seen a zero for an address, you know.
It's land.
It's, it's an empty lot.
Okay.
Some by a trustee or a trust fund, tried to reach them, but no reply, so.
All right. Well, that explains that, then.
I was wondering that myself.
All right. Yeah, I couldn't resist. I said, I said, it wasn't, but I couldn't resist that one.
Okay. Any further discussion? So we have a motion by Mr. Hurd, as amended by Mr. Decorsi, and seconded by Mrs. Mahan to approve between Orient and Madison. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. And opposed, unanimous. Perhaps we'll have the pleasure of seeing you again in the coming months. Thank you very much for your service to your neighbors and community. I know how hard it is, and I know that they appreciate it.
I thank them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brings us to item ten, appointments. So we have, first up, we have three appointments this evening. We have the Arlington Commission on Arts and Culture Grants Committee, formerly known as the Arlington Cultural Council. And we have, the appointee is Shelley Chabra. We have Shelley coming in on Zoom. Good evening.
Hi, good evening.
If you could just introduce yourself and just make a brief statement about your interest in service.
My name's Shelley Chabra. I've been in Arlington.
My name's Shelley Chabra. I've been an Arlington resident since 2010. I have two children in the school system. And I have had experience as, I guess, on the other side where I was applying for grants as a cultural arts educator. And that brings me to wanting to volunteer my time in this town to help promote public art and immersion in cultural arts education.
Splendid. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. I will turn to the board for any questions, comments, or motions.
I'll make a motion to approve. And thank you very much. I mean, so and as you said, you've been on the other end. I mean, so so the the grant process, I mean, so I am sure that you will understand, I mean, what goes into making a good grant and then and then approving that. So thank you very much.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hurd?
Always happy to welcome fellow jumbos to the service of the town of Arlington.
Thank you.
I think we just missed each other.
Excellent. Okay, I think we're good to go. Thank you again for your willingness. This is an important function. And I think Arlington is one of Arlington's great, one of Arlington's many strengths is our commitment to investing in arts and culture and cultivating that engagement with the whole community. And I look forward to the good work that you and your other commissioners will be doing on the committee. So on a motion to appoint by Mr. Diggins and seconded by Mr. De Corsi, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you again.
Thank you.
We have item 11, appointments to the Elderly and Disabled Tax Relief Fund Committee. Applicant is Michael Quinn, who is also in Zoom. So let's bring Mr. Quinn in. Mr. Quinn, when your hearing comes, can unmute yourself and go in camera if you wish.
I don't have a camera hooked up, but I do have
That's all right. Good evening. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Just tell us, introduce yourself and express your interest in serving.
Sure. My name is Michael Quinn. I live in precinct 10. I've been a town meeting member since 2003. Two kids who went through the Arlington School System. I currently serve on the Board of the Council on Aging. I'm in the board chair for the last few years. I've also previously worked on the Tax Aid Program, doing taxes on a volunteer basis for low income elderly in Arlington. And I'm familiar with the work from a distance of the Elderly and Disabled Tax Aid Relief Fund Committee, because it's something that the Council on Aging and the board are aware of from that. Previously, Rick Fenton, who was on our committee on the board, served on that committee. He passed away earlier this summer. And I've been getting to learn a little bit more about some of the processes and things from him for that. But I'm looking to serve on that committee, and I'm hoping to continue along in the work that that's been done there.
Thank you very much, sir. If you can, if you can do town meeting for 20 years, I bet you can manage this. Mr. Corsi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move approval and thank Mr. Quinn for his willingness to serve, but also thank him, as he mentioned, he's the board, the chair of the Council on Aging, or the board of the Council on Aging. And his term is up actually this year, till he'll be stepping down from that. But, Michael, I wanted to thank you for the important work that you've done in in leading the board and attended a number of meetings. And you do a wonderful job in in that position. I'm happy to support you for this role.
Thank you.
Mr. Hurd.
Just second that motion. Just continue down my Tufts path here. I was actually an economics major at Tufts. I don't think we were there at the same time. But I'm looking at a few of the the courses that you teach at Tufts. It's bringing me back. Whether they go to bad memories, I won't say in a public forum. But again, thank you for your willingness to serve in any capacity in Arlington. And I appreciate anybody that steps up and especially, you know, everyone has a busy schedule and fit in time and to serve is not easy. And we know from experience. So thank you.
It's not just a select war meeting, it's also a trip down memory lane, right?
Yep. I was trying to get Mr. Hurd to get the motion because I could tell that he wanted it.
Well, we got you both in, so.
But yes, thank you, Mr. Quinn. And and I know the challenge is to get people to avail themselves, I mean, of of this relief. I remember you, I forget what forum it was, you know, you said that, I mean, a lot of people just don't, I mean, utilize this resource, I mean, and and it's important, I mean, that they realize it's there and that and that they use it. So hopefully you can help with that. So thank you.
Any further comments? Mr. Quinn, thank you for exemplary service to the town, as Mr. De Corsi said. And we do appreciate you stepping up to fill this role as well. So on a motion to appoint by Mr. De Corsi and seconded by Mr. Hurd, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous vote. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Finally, we have a nominee for the appointment to the LGBTQIA plus Rainbow Commission by Fiona Perry. Oh, welcome.
Hello.
So, good evening. Please introduce yourself and tell us about your interests.
Hello, I'm Fiona Perry. Been an Arlington resident since 2019. For the entire time I have been here, I have benefited from the Rainbow Commission through their various works, educating the community, making sure that people like myself are welcome and feel as though we can present ourselves authentically. And I want to continue that tradition and help make this community a more inclusive, better place for people like myself.
Beautifully said. Thank you. I'll turn to the board for any questions, comments, or motions. Mrs. Mahan.
I'd like to move approval and say thank you to Ms. Perry. We've said this many, many times. We probably couldn't afford you. But thankfully, we're getting you, as as many other people, one of the core characters of the town of Arlington are the volunteers in the citizenry and willing to take time, their personal time, family time, work time, in that order, to, you know, work on making Arlington continue to be welcoming. But we can always do better. And sometimes the way we can do better is things that we just don't have a perspective on. So I do appreciate you stepping forward and doing this. And the Rainbow Coalition has many events to which we all come to. But we also always say, if there's anything that the board, as a combined board, or any one of us individually, we're here also as a resource. And we look forward to working with you in the in the commission in the future.
Mr. Hurd?
Second, and thank you for your willingness to step up and serve. I don't see any Tufts connection, but that's okay.
She's saying no.
I mean, since its inception, the Rainbow Coalition has been one of the most active commissions that we have and one of the most important. I think it is time intensive, which I'm sure you're aware of. But it really is very important to, you know, for the community that we create, for the kids that are in schools, and the partnerships that we have. It really is a an important commission that we rely on a lot. So thank you for your willingness to serve.
Not only more inclusive, but more fabulous, right? You know, it goes without saying, I know. I know. And we've actually seen you in action in the on the commission already. So so thank you. Thank you immensely.
Well, I heartily endorse everything my colleagues have said. And I think we are ready for a vote. So on a motion to appoint by Mrs. Mahan, as seconded by Mr. Hurd, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Of course.
All right, this moves us to item 13, licenses and permits. We have four approval, common vitular license, the Mill Cafe at 14 Mill Street. And good evening, Andrew Hunter.
Yeah.
Introduce yourself. And thank you for your patience, sir.
Oh, absolutely. You're, wow, I'm Drew Hunter. I just serve as the executive director for High Rock Church and the Mill Cafe. Your question about what 504 was and his ability to answer just like without even looking down at his page was absolutely amazing. I wish he was here to like hear that, but that was incredible.
I'm meeting with him on reclassification.
Okay, well, you want to know, right?
That was a jaw dropping moment. Somebody was producing still bottom parts and like tried to defend them in public. I'm just like, whoa. That was amazing. Anyway.
Be sure to pass that on. Thank you. Thank you.
We'll send in the video clip. Attempts to curry favor by flattering the director of assessments will be favorably looked upon.
Well, there you go. There you go. It's a sincere moment. So let me talk about the Mill Cafe and just cast a little vision about it. So High Rock redeveloped the property at 14 Mill Street from the garage and the sporting goods store and the auto body repair on the second floor and the auto parts on the first floor. We're talking about that space that was the auto parts on the first floor, which we've opened up all the windows as you've probably driven by or walked by. And you can see into this space that is the lobby of the church on Sunday. And what we're what we've been developing over the last few months since we opened on Mother's Day in that space for our first service is to have a cafe that's open to the public in that front space that looks out onto Mill Street. So the cafe is going to be open, ideally, we're going to open it for five days a week, but we can't staff that yet. So we're opening initially in our soft launch for Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And we'll be open to public, normal business hours. We're trying to make a space for the community. So we have a large space there. It's kind of unique in Arlington. And we bought a chessboard with two foot pieces and, you know, big connect four. And we've made a corner that has space for kids to play in. But it's not really about that. It's about the fact that parents and caregivers need space to connect to one another. And the high school students seem to have a hard time having a space they can just be after school, or do work, or hang out with each other. And we have enough space for that to happen. But but we want to be hospitable in that. So we need to have great drinks. And so we have partnered with Counter Culture Coffee, and we are offering espresso drinks and some basic baked goods and some pre made sandwiches and pretty much a grab and go menu for people to come in and to enjoy, to stay or to go. I think it's a really great space for that. I'm really excited about what that can do for the community. In addition to that, we've been partnering with the high school and talking to them about their disability program, the way that they're serving the disability, the students with disabilities. We have several in our community that are part of that program. We want to see what's the need there. And their need has been for job placement. And so we've got two students lined up that we would like to hire in January. And the cafe offers that space that they can get a job outside of the high school and get something on their resume so that they can then get the next job. I don't think they'll work for us forever. But that we could be that interim step. And as we've talked with them, now we've talked with other organizations in the kind of surrounding communities, and this need is huge. And so initially, we're staffing it with our team to learn, because we've never opened a cafe before. But come January, we're going to begin employing people with disabilities and making this a space that creates community for Arlington, but also is a community serving. And we're excited about that. It's a nonprofit. We're not looking to make money. All the profits from the cafe will actually go to support other nonprofits, including so the way we're doing that to tell people, understand that is that every time you buy something at the cafe, you get a vote. And we'll have three opportunities for you to vote where our profits go to, should we make profit. I know a lot of cafes don't. But if we do, then what are we going to do with that? I think that's important, because if you're going to come into a church like ours, and you're going to go to a cafe, you might have reservation about whether where where what am I supporting here? So let's be really transparent about it. And let you have a choice in that. So we've had Food Link in our basement for a long time. We've helped support them, and they've been a partner for us for years. So we're going to have that be one of our options. And we have an option that serves families on the border of Mexico, the United States, and an option that's international. And you can choose. Where do you where would you like? And then we'll just divide our any profits we get among them. So I I've not seen anything like this, which is just fun for me as a dreamer and entrepreneur in this space to to bring this to you. And so I'm asking for approval.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Mr. Diggins?
So yes, I mean, I'd like to motion approval and and that creative idea about the participatory element of determining where the profits go, that's that's good. That's really good. I really, I really, really like that. So and also, I like that you are trying to help those who are disabled get employment, I mean, and so I don't know if that also includes, you know, people with Down syndrome, but they tend to be very good, good workers. I mean, my one concern
Yeah.
is on the pest management.
Yeah.
You indicate that you're using First Strike, which is a it's a S G A R, you know. And so so those are kind of bad for for raptors, you know. And so so we actually passed a we had an article in our last warrant, I mean, that really is trying to discourage the town from using them.
Okay.
And so on the town side, which we can control, you know, we are no longer using them, or at least we're transitioning to to not using them. We can't really affect, I mean, businesses, I mean, but we can let you know, I mean, that it is a big concern, you know, in town. And so so but I mean, I really appreciate the transparency, I mean, well, not transparency, but that you letting us know, I mean, that you do have pest management, you know. But we just wanted to flag that. All right?
That's great.
All right.
We're just dependent on what they tell us we need. So any any direction like that is super helpful.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Sure. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
Second the motion. This is exciting. I like to say, I have to say, this is probably the most enthusiastic common vacation we've had in a long time. We have a lot of, you know, new businesses coming in that so it clearly you have put a lot of thought into this. And I always like a homemade waffle. So when they see that on the menu, that's a keeper for me. So I look forward to it. And good luck.
Thank you. Ashley told me I could come and talk about whatever I wanted to. And I was like, well, then I'm bringing it. She's been really helpful, by the way. I have no idea what to do. And she's been very good at guiding me.
Mrs. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wish I had a pref code 504 question to ask you. Everything's pretty explanatory here. And and I do appreciate, as my colleague, Mr. Diggins, said about having employees with disabilities. But it not only, as you know, not only helps the individual, it definitely helps the community to, you know, see, you know, everyone says, oh, diversity and transparency. And I'm not saying that in a sarcastic or negative way.
Right.
But first and foremost, there are actions. And I think it's I like it to be able to see it here in our Arlington community versus a, you know, a Facebook story out of Norwood or Bend, Oregon, I'm going to get my town wrong, or anything like that. But it really is reciprocal. As someone who, you know, deals with that, as we all do to varying degrees in my family life. So I thank you for the opportunity that you're giving to those two individuals in the future, but even more so for the Arlington Community High School all the way up to, if you can make it to 110, 120 years old, God bless you, you've got a place to sit and hope your backpack's not that heavy. So thank you so much.
Thanks.
Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Mr. Hunter, for the presentation, for elaborating beyond the application in terms of the the plans for the the proceeds and giving the consumer choice there. So I'm excited to support this as well.
Great.
And wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Likewise, I love the community vision for this. I think that something that we hear often in the town government is that residents in general want more community gathering spaces and, you know, more cafes. And I think we have not begun to saturate that that market. And I think this is a really unique vision with some really good ideas for staffing and for community space. So I wish you the best of luck. So on a motion to approve by Mr. Diggins and seconded by Mr. Hurd, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good to see you.
We look forward to the waffles.
All kinds of interesting syrups, too.
And all the syrups, yes. All right. Now we brings us to open forum. So except, this is the part where I said, get ready to raise your hands in Zoom. Except in unusual circumstances, any matter presented for consideration of the board shall neither be acted on nor decision made the night of the presentation in accordance with the policy under which the open forum was established. There is a three minute time limit to present a concern or request. So if you are in Zoom and you want to participate in open forum, please raise your hand there. If you're in the room, do the same thing only in real life. I R L, as the kids say. Ms. Mar, do we have anybody raising their hand in Zoom?
Seeing no hands raised.
Seeing no hands. All right. Shortest open forum ever. All right. Let's move on to traffic orders, rules and orders and other business. And item 14, this will be a discussion and a potential vote regarding House Bill 886, an act relative to combine sewer overflows. And I need I'm going to step away for a moment. Before I do, if we have a couple, if we have two proponents, I'd just ask that you move the microphone to the I'd just ask that you move the microphone to the middle of the table. I am, I do need to recuse myself from this because of my employment by the Massachusetts Senate. And I cannot participate as an official of the town in, in a way that would petition the legislature in reform on Arlington's behalf. So I will turn this portion of the meeting over to my trusty vice chair, Mr. Hurd.
All right. And thank you. So we will start with a presentation on this item. We have a few individuals here from Save the L-Wife Brook. If you can both just identify yourselves for the record, and then we can start your presentation.
My name is Kristen Anderson, and I live at 12 Upland Road West.
My name is David Stoff, and I live at 88 Fairmont Street.
All right, and you can proceed with your presentation.
Tonight, I'm presenting on behalf of Gene Benson and Save the L-Wife Brook. Gene is unable to be here, and he asked me to speak on his behalf. Gene Benson and David Stoff drafted the language for House Bill 886. The bill was filed by Representative Dave Rogers and Representative Adrian Madaro and co-sponsored by Representative Sean Garbely and seven others. We are extremely appreciative that they filed this legislation. As you know, Dave Rogers represents Arlington and Cambridge residents along L-Wife Brook. Representative Madaro represents a neighborhood in East Boston, and his family lives very close to a CSO. This legislation addresses the CSO pollution problem head on. If passed, it would require CSO treatment or a higher level of CSO control, what the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority refers to as economically achievable virtual elimination. This would affect not just the L-Wife CSOs, but all CSOs in the MWRA system. And to be clear, this legis, under this legislation, CSOs would either receive disinfection and screening or they would be engineered to discharge only in large 25-year storms. And 10 years is more than enough time to implement either or both of these changes. Next slide, please. So why is this legislation necessary? It is because 38 years after the legislature created the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority to end the dumping of sewage and sludge into Boston Harbor, and 25 years after the Deer Island Treatment Plant started treating the region's sewage to end Boston Harbor pollution, dumping of untreated sewage continues. Fifty combined sewer overflows discharge many hundreds of millions of gallons of sewage, which is human and industrial waste, annually into Boston-area rivers, streams, brooks, water channels, and the Boston Harbor. And 40 CSOs dump untreated human and industrial wastes into our waterways in larger and smaller storms without any treatment whatsoever. Six of them are in the small flood-prone L-Wife Brook. This legislation would affect the 40 CSOs in the MWRA system, which have no treatment. Next slide, please. This slide shows CSOs in the MWRA system and highlights that in 2021, 1 billion gallons of CSO sewage was discharged. L-Wife Brook is treated very unfairly, but this is a regional problem, and Boston must do better. Next slide, please. So will federal law fix the CSO problem? The answer is no. Federal standards allow CSOs to continue to dump untreated sewage. And MWRA has made it very clear to us that it has no intention of doing anything beyond the bare minimum as required by law. This legislation is necessary and essential to ensure that the CSO entities do more than is minimally required by federal and state requirements for CSO control. Without it, very little is likely to improve with the L-Wife CSOs, and we will certainly not see a 25-year storm level of CSO control. And last slide, please. So now is the time for the legislature to act, and together we can address the unfinished business of the Boston Harbor cleanup. We ask for your support of H-886, an act relative to combined sewer overflows. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Turn to the board for any questions, comments, motions.
Shocking.
Mrs. Mahan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, acting chair. And thank you, Ms. Anderson. Mr. Stoff, who's been at this for decades. I want to thank the Save the L-Wife Brook for this work and other work that you've been working in concert with the town in whether it's NIPD's permit, MWRA, CSO, et cetera. We've gotten valuable comments and expertise and insight from you individually, Kristen and David, as well as others, and I do appreciate that. I would like to move approval of House 8886 in the 23, 24-year session. And Kristen already outlined the reasons, you know, why this is important. But basically, as was stated, MWRA is going to do the minimum and, and nothing more. And yes, there are protections under the Clean Water Act, but the town council can correct me if I'm incorrect on this, but there's nothing forbidding us or preempting us from requiring through the state that its entities, whether it's other cities, towns, or authorities, don't do just the bare minimum, but do more. And especially when we're talking about combined sewer overflows, this is something that I think will go a long way and where we do have momentum at various agencies and in the State House. I think this is worthwhile, and it's not just a exercise, not that anybody has expressed this, of just spinning the wheels and doing something. This is something that will definitely, I think, be looked at very seriously and has a really good chance of success. And I would ask that, along with our support, if we vote that way on, on the motion, that a letter from this board addressed to the co-chairs of the Joint Committee on Environmental and Natural Resources, copied to the Senate President and House Speaker, our delegation at the State House, and as well as the Governor Healy, I think would be a worthwhile endeavor because it would also give the people that are continuing to work on this, whether it's our legislative delegation, our citizen activists, our town manager, town council, something when they go seek an audience with those various individuals themselves or collectively that they'll, they'll already have sort of noticed that we're on our way in. So thank you. I apologize for being so worried.
Mr. DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd. I'll second Mrs. Mahan's motion, and thank you for all the work that you both have been doing all along throughout these years. And certainly, when you, the more we learn about this and the more we hear about it, and we spoke last meeting about just what happened on August 8th, 2023, and in a relatively short rainstorm, the amount of untreated sewage that entered L-Wife Brook and into the walkways. I mean, it's just something that's, that's unacceptable in this day and age. And so we're happy to support it. And I would support as well a letter coming from the board, as Mrs. Mahan outlined, and we'll keep talking about this and try to get it done right. So thank you.
So I am fine with supporting a letter from the board if it's signed by the board. You know, I support the initiative. I do have a kind of philosophical position, you know, bringing these kinds of issues, not issues, supportive legislation, you know, to the board. As you have heard me say several times, you know, I did this, I think, in my second year in supporting a real estate transfer fee, you know, bill. And, and as I said, I regretted doing so. And I did so because the group that I was working with, the Real Estate Transfer Fee Coalition, asked me to do so. And we had passed an article in support of that. But in retrospect, I felt that it wasn't the right thing to do because I didn't have a reason for the, doing it for the bill I supported versus the any other bill, like, like this one. And also, I felt that there were more effective ways to go about getting that support. And I'll, I'll give you an example because it's interesting that one of the sponsors or the, the main proponents of the bill is Senator Madaro. Town meeting member, Gamaro, I'm not pronouncing his name correctly. He brought before us an article where he wanted support for high school, no. I think it was community college. The ability for any high school student, even if they're a migrant, to be able to attend a community college. And, and the board decided to vote no action on that article because we felt it was kind of out of the scope for Arlington's town meeting. And I said that I would, I told him I really supported the idea, and I would come back to him and see what I could do to help with that. I got back to him after special town meeting, asked him how things were going, and he said it is part of, it was part of the governor's budget. And so, so now they're getting that support. I was curious as to how, how that happened, you know? And so I went to the legislation, and I saw the exact language that was in Madaro's bill in that budget. And that's why I tried back saying, so what was the mechanism by which that happened? He hasn't gotten back to me, but now Madaro, I think, knows. My whole point is that, I think there are ways to really get what you want. And, and I'm willing to work to see how we can, we can move this along. And so I'm going to reach out to Representative Rogers and Garbely, and also Senator Friedman, because I mean, see what her take is on this. I didn't see her sign up for it, and so I'm kind of curious. Yeah, well, actually, it's not for me to direct it to you, but we can redirect. But so I really want to work this from some other angles, you know, and, and see what can be done to really help it get, get passed or at least probably become part of another bill, you know? And I think there's going to need to be monies behind this, you know? So, so either whether that becomes part of another budget or maybe part of a bond bill, you know? I don't know, but I'm willing to, my abstaining on this doesn't mean that I'm not supporting it. I'm just explaining my kind of philosophical position. And also, I have to add one other element to this is that I know that the new coalition for a real estate transfer fee is wanting me to do the same thing again. And I've already told them I'm not going to do that, you know? And so I just need to be kind of consistent in across that. All right, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. I'm happy to support this. I, you know, I think a letter of support can be very persuasive. I think we've done it a number of times with the MBTA assessment and a whole other host of issues. And it certainly doesn't preclude all the other avenues that are available to get this legislation passed. So I think it is very worthwhile. I know we'll have some good language to work off of that we can create from our own work of recently, recent letters that we've drafted. So just for clarity from the board, is the intention that I work with town council to just come up with a basic letter, send it? Or do we want to come up with a draft, present it at a further meeting to the four members of the board voting in order to approve that letter?
I'm comfortable with you just working with town council and the entities that I outlined, and I guess it will be the three members. I'm really saddened that Mr. Diggins is going to abstain on this because the CSO issue is really important. And when people ask, you know, what can we do and what are you doing? This isn't just a letter on a piece of paper. And I'm not going to comment on, when you asked for it, we gave it to you on the real estate issue. But this is one of the main issues in East Arlington. And your abstention, meaning not supporting it, you know, will be noted. And, but I know that others of us that are supporting it, we'll make sure we contact not only our legislative delegation, but also the other representatives and senators that we have interactions with. And I'm really dismayed that we can't speak with a common voice on this. I'm sure MWRA is kicking up their heels and, as well as... And I understand you're on different boards in, in the state with MAPC and MBTA and others. And it's probably good that, for you, that you abstain on this. But I'm really upset that you're doing that. And I would say this is something you should be doing as a member of the board, and to not do it is my personal experience. And we'll be friends when we walk out of here, but I think it's negligent of your duties to this very important issue. Thank you.
Mr. Diggins.
So I think I will be more effective this way because I will come back to probably everyone that you all, well, you all, that the board will contact. And to the extent that they notice that I'm not there, when I come back and make communications with them, I think it will make an even greater impact. So, so, I mean, there are multiple ways to support things. And so I'm making it clear that I do support this effort. And I intend to be visible on it, but I do have my philosophical position, which I'm going to stick with for now. You know, I mean, it could change. But also, I do want to make it clear that even though you all did support that request on the real estate transfer fee, I have said numerous times I regret asking for it because I felt it was the wrong thing to do, you know? And so, and also for me on this one, you know, but like I said, I have a position. And I appreciate you saying that we'll be friends after this. And I also appreciate your expression of your disappointment. That means a lot to me, and I will take it into account in future situations.
No, I understand what you're saying. You asked for it, you got it, and you're not reciprocating. That's fine. Thank you.
All right, all right.
All right, I'll work with town council, and we'll come up with the appropriate letter, and we'll get that signed and sent. So we have a motion to approve of the legislation and direct me as chair to work with town council to send a letter of the board's support from Mrs. Mahan, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey. I haven't been writing them down like a normal chair. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Any abstentions?
Me, Glenn, aye.
That is a three, zero vote with one abstention. With that, I will step back into my vice chair shadows.
Thank you.
Welcome. 2001, Mr. Hurd. You have to do the practice so you don't forget how to do it. All right. Am I still chair after I've pulled me out? Okay, that brings us to item 15. Oh, we have some very patient people in the room. Request for an on-stream daytime, on-street daytime parking waiver. William Andrew Breckwald.
Yeah, Will. Will Breckwald.
Will, very, very, yes, very, that will do.
Hi, I'm Alana Westwater.
Great. So we do have your application in front of us, but for the public record, introduce yourself and summarize your request, please.
Sure, Will Breckwald. Both of us moved into 12 Brooks in August, so Arlington residents for just a few months.
Yeah, Alana Westwater, 12 Brooks Ave resident.
And she owns the car, so.
And car owner, I guess, yeah.
And I guess the situation is, we are renters. Our landlord lives above us. We have tandem parking, and so, and we have a two-hour limit, nine to five, Monday through Friday. So essentially, we are kind of constantly shuffling cars so folks can go to work or the gym or wherever. And just to dodge this two-hour window, or else we may get a ticket. And we've gotten a ticket for going five minutes over before, so it's kind of a real threat. And from what we've seen, living there a few years, even though there's soccer games and things going on, there's not a lot of cars parked there. It's a pretty quiet end of Brooks Ave. It's not that close to the school. It's far end from that. So it's not unreasonable to expect that there's going to be a parking spot. It'd be nice to use it, so.
Oh, I just, I think... I just, I think with us working from home, it would be very helpful with, I don't have, we don't have a place to put the car when we move it out. We don't like drive off premises. So the shuffling will happen and it's very commonplace to be in meetings for both of us from probably eight to 11, oh, 10, and then you get a ticket. So it would be nice to have a little bit of flexibility and that's really what we're looking for out of this.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think I will see if there's anybody in the public on Zoom or in the room that wanted to comment on this application before we turn to the board. So if you're in Zoom and you want to make any comments, please raise your hand at this time. I'm not currently in the Zoom meeting, so I'll rely on Ms. Maher as always.
Seeing no hands raised at this time.
And I will further note in researching this that credit to the applicants for reading our parking policies very carefully because we're not sure that we've ever considered one of these. And I won't be ashamed to admit that I didn't even know about it. So that's a compliment. And I think now we have to decide what to do. So I will now turn to the board for any questions, comments, motions. Mr. Hurd.
Well, my first question, is this you guys on Google Maps?
Remade it.
Yes.
We made it. I sent it to my parents.
Stand out there for that to happen.
We saw the, because we're from home, so out the window, we saw the Google car drive by. They turned around at the end of the block and so we ran out just for a minute and we got on Google Maps.
Send it to our parents immediately when we saw it.
So I guess, because I'm going to ask town council because I'm not, I also am not familiar with the, this particular area of our, now is the request essentially to create a space deck specifically for their vehicle or is it just to repeal two-hour parking in front of their property?
I would interpret it, Mr. Hurd, as for their vehicle.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you know, I think a couple of years ago, I would have said no to this application just because, well, we've been going through this whole, you know, kind of change in, you know, how we had thought of our parking policies. You know, the next item, if you want to stick around, talks about overnight parking. The, you know, the two-hour parking is in place there at the request of many residents because of commuter parking. I don't, it sounds like that's not an issue where you are. I mean, I would be more comfortable, and I don't know if it's within the request or if there's a way to even carve this out in our traffic rules in order to just repeal the two-hour parking in front of the one particular resident, but I don't know if that's the right avenue for this. I think, you know, it's in the rules. So I mean, if we're allowed to create a parking space for one individual, then great, I think. But I don't, there's something about that that gives me a little bit of pause where I think while you were the individuals that found the rule that was already in place, I think when others hear, they're going to say that they want, well, hey, that's the solution to the commuter parking is to just create a parking space in front of my particular house just for my car. Again, I don't know if town council has any thoughts on whether or not as an alternative we can just repeal two-hour parking in front of this one particular house. Or, I mean, that might be a enforcement nightmare for police. It just, I mean, it does give me a little bit of pause to just designate one portion of the public way for one individual. Through the chair.
As always, yeah.
Mr. Chair. Thank you. Not a bad suggestion, Mr. Hurd. I think that in consistency with Ms. Mahan's comments about procedure earlier on, I think it'd probably be best practice if the board was going to take such an action or consider such an action for it to do it at a future meeting when that has been noticed more clearly. I think this individual application pertains to this individual and not necessarily the street itself.
Okay. Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to congratulate you as well. I noticed that seeing you here tonight, I realized it was the two of you. I almost looked at this not so much as the spot in front of the house and I realized Attorney Cunningham said that, but I, it seems to me that anywhere on Brooks, as long as that two-hour, you don't necessarily have to be in front of your house, do you?
I mean, so what was it?
So in other words, there's a stretch of Brooks Ave there. I'm just concerned at some point, people are going to start going back to ill life to get into town and that's going to become a problem in terms of parking. I would be reluctant to remove that restriction because I see that as an area that people are going to, the red line never becomes more reliable. You're going to see more people, more people going into town. So I see that potentially as a problem. You might find what's going to happen is there's going to be cars in front of your house before you even pull out of the driveway because that was the experience, that's what led that restriction to go in prior to the pandemic. And so just asking you if you had, you know, ideally you'd like to be in front of your house, but if it was a sticker for daytime use, would you care if it was anywhere on the street?
Yeah, I mean, we really weren't thinking of removing the two-hour parking in front of the house. The way it's written, I don't know exactly how to interpret it, but yeah, if it's a sticker and if we had to park a few houses down, they're okay, like it.
It may not be an issue now, but that would be my concern to do something tonight to remove that because I think we might be creating another problem.
Yeah, I think we're really kind of focusing on like one vehicle. I think that is the hope.
Limited scope here.
Well, I see Mr. Town Manager.
Yeah, of course. Oh, thank you. Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Diggins. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, to be clear, when we evaluated this request, it was, this would be interpreted as what we call a dash pass. So you would be getting an eight and a half, 11 piece of paper that lists your license plate and exempts you from two-hour parking on Brooks Ave. So this would not be consideration of a physical parking spot located in a specific space on the street. Hopefully that's helpful.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney Cunningham.
And Mr. Chair, just to back that up, and I think Mr. Hurd alluded to it earlier, I think that to do something otherwise, and why my interpretation is what it is, is it really creates an enforcement nightmare.
Yeah.
So I think that that's, that factors into how I interpreted this particular regulation.
I don't want to jump in in front of a lot of people. So given new information, you know, we learn something new every time in these meetings. We try to be prepared, but it's hard with everything that we have on our plates. So as, you know, I guess I had in my mind envisioned this like a reserved handicap space in front of somebody's house. And if that's not the case, then it is, you know, it's definitely more palatable for me because, you know, essentially someone is parked in front of your house, you can't go out and knock on the door and say, hey, get out of here, this is my spot. It does create issues of, you know, other neighbors that might say, hey, this car has been parked in my house, in front of my house for eight hours. So I would, if we do approve this, I would recommend, you know, kind of spreading out the burden a little bit if you can't be in front of your house. But I mean, I guess my suggestion with the two-hour parking was just relative to an idea that we're putting it specifically in your house and kind of granting you a little piece of town property all to yourselves. So I mean, with that, I would withdraw any requests to explore, you know, repealing two-hour parking just in one particular location.
Yeah, I think from, from the discussion, it's sounding like this, you know, referring to the parking policy that this sounds like an on-street daytime parking permit, parentheses, permanent, you know, with a fee structure that's mentioned in the policy and that does seem to apply just to one vehicle or to one owner. Mrs. Mahan?
My process and all the P-words that I like to talk about, but I definitely stand by it. To me, you'd have to demonstrate a hardship. And when you say your hardship is, you know, having to shuffle in and out of the driveway, to me, that's not a hardship. That's an inconvenience. And what you have to understand is your neighbors came before the board and said, because of the commuter parking, please put this two-hour in effect. And we understand the sacrifice of that, including having people come over to visit if it's more than two hours. But because of the situation there, they ask that. And I know there are other streets. I'm thinking of precedent, what would happen here if we approved this, which I'm not inclined to do, honestly. If the request was, you know, it's a temporary thing and, you know, say I had a medical issue and I have a caregiver coming for two weeks, two months, whatever, yes. But because of the shuffle and not wanting to do that and being out on the street, I know there are other streets. And I've spoken to neighbors on Lafayette and Boulevard because I go nuts in the morning. Go down there by 6:30 in the morning, completely packed with commuter parking and people like, I can't even get out of my driveway. We've had to have police come down and try to, and you can't find the owners because they're on the ill life. So, but they haven't taken the step to put up the two-hour parking because they don't want to give up the rare opportunity that they can park on their street. So I think for this particular request, I would not be in favor of it. I would not support it because you do have an option. You can shuffle your cars around. I know it's a pain. You can come by my house, 23 Howard Street. I have two adult disabled people who live there and I do the shuffle and I have a hill like this, which really stinks in the wintertime because you've got to sand and shovel, otherwise you go into the backyard on Higgins Street. So I totally get that. But we have to be mindful of what we do here. I mean, maybe if you go out and canvass your neighbors and say, will you support us to repeal the request of Brooks Ave, Paulo Marinelli and others, which I don't think they'll be in favor of, to say, to get rid of two-hour parking so that we can do that, but to have this one individual so that you don't have to do the shuffle out of your driveway, I think it's a really, it's a precedent that I'm very leery of. So I'll wait to see what the rest of the board does, but I wouldn't support it and I can only imagine what it would open.
Mr. Hurd?
I guess it would be for Attorney Cunningham, if we grant this, what's the, is it in perpetuity? We're granting it forever? Is it something that has to be renewed? Is it something that we can take back if we don't want to?
Renewable yearly.
Okay.
Renew annually, Mr. Hurd, yeah.
Okay. I, I mean, I hear all that and I think that's a consideration that we've had. I think that's a consideration we had with overnight parking. And there wasn't a whole lot of, I mean, we had the pilot and there was, I think, a lot fewer people that requested overnight parking permits. And I think in the past, we've not granted or not, particularly, we talk a lot about overnight parking. Clearly, this is a new issue that we've dealt with, the daytime parking. But, you know, I think we granted it. We were hesitant because we thought it would create this influx of people parking overnight and it hasn't. So I guess my mentality is kind of going towards not saying no to something because of what could, you know, relative to parking, you know, to say, oh, you know, all these people could come out of the woodwork and ask for the same thing. I think, I mean, would it be within our discretion if all of a sudden, you know, 400 people in East Arlington said, I want to do, get one of these passes too, that to start denying passes and then just say, you know, when they come up for renewal, say, you know, we kind of opened a can of worms and we're not going to renew any of them that we have out there. And then we're going to go to town meeting and ask to amend our zoning bylaws to take out this, like, do we have wide discretion, I guess, in this area or is it something that if we, if we approve one, we have to approve a similar application?
Mr. Attorney Cunningham.
I think, Mr. Hurd, you would have that discretion. The board would have that discretion. And I think that the applications would be considered on a case-by-case basis anyway pursuant to the hardship evaluation that Mrs. Mahan talked about. Traditionally, that's the type of analysis I've seen the board undertake on these types of applications. So there could be applications that the board might deem more or less of a hardship than others. But to the extent that there was a wave of applications that created a problem and the board wanted to reconsider its position at that point and begin denying those applications and then not renewing applications as they came up at the end of a year, that would be within the board's discretion.
Okay. Let me ask a couple of questions and I'll turn to my colleagues. To the town manager, if you are aware, can you give us an idea of how many of these two-hour parking streets there are? Like, I'm thinking about a potential expansion, you know. I wouldn't say a precedent because this is already in our parking policies, but if we had more people aware of this, what would we be looking at?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize, but I do not have that information immediately available.
This is why in a town meeting, the moderator always says, transmit your questions ahead of time and don't try to spring them on town officials. So there's your lesson for that. So I think that's something for us to generally keep in mind. I guess that was my only other question. I have some comments, but I will reserve those to after my colleagues are finished. Mr. Diggins?
I think that list is available in our parking policies. I mean, at the end of it, I mean, there's a list of streets and it tells you what the restrictions are.
Oh, great.
So I might be able to scan that quickly and get a sense. I was aware of this. And so, so, because I kind of like rewrote the parking policy part, when we were planning to do or considering doing overnight parking, I wanted to knew, I wanted to put that in as our policy so that people had a sense. And I saw it and I was like, wow, that's a whole nother discussion. And perhaps we'll get some insights as to how we, whether we want to change policy and how, if we do, how we do it based on the overnight parking trial. And so, so one of the things I don't like about the discretionary element of it is that it is discretionary. And so I realize that gives us the ability to choose and make hopefully good decisions and hopefully consistent ones. But I think, I mean, a policy that kind of does that work for us is better. And I'd like to see us develop that policy if we want to go down that road and then, and then apply it. So I can see us setting up potentially for another trial. What made the overnight parking trial easier was that we had a place for people to go when they need to get their cars off the road. That option isn't there in daytime because, I mean, the lots that we use for storing cars at nighttime or being used in the daytime. So we'd have to come up with a, potentially another solution if we, you know, say like, okay, you need to get your car off the road. There's no emergency and it's in the daytime. And so I would like to see us work through a new policy. And so if this were more of a health issue and had an elevated sense of urgency and need, I would be supportive of it. I certainly understand the issues with work and the conflict when you have two people on a call at the time and it's your work-related and you need to move things. I certainly get that, but it's, it's not unique, I'm sure, you know. And it's just, there's a level of discomfort with granting this that I just can't get over now to get to a yes on it. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I am comfortable with another LSY. I view this as a special situation because of where you live, being close to ill life, one. Two, both applicants here work at home. And that to me is the condition for us granting you the permit. So if your job situation changed or something like that, that may come up at renewal time. But that to me is the precedent. The other thing, when I look at our parking policies, we have hardship in the overnight parking section. This section doesn't mention hardship. It just mentions that someone can come in. So I view that, again, I didn't create the policy, but I try to follow the policy. That to me gives us discretion in terms of the special circumstance. So I think proximity to ill life, and it is part of a larger problem that we may be looking at in terms of what type of enforcement we have. But I think you're in a unique situation and other parts of town, you wouldn't have that worry. You could just park all day, but because of where you are and because of the issues there, I think it makes sense that the two-hour, but because you find yourself in jobs that are at home, I personally am comfortable based on our, on the language of our policy in approving this. So on that basis, I'm going to move approval.
Thank you. I guess. Thank you. I guess I'll make a few remarks as well. I would also, I'll also support that motion. If nobody else seconds it, I'll second it, out of, I'm going to second Mr. Hurd. You know, I think that, I also feel that, I'm mindful of, of the newness of this, and, you know, it's some of the risks that come with, with new. But I think the policy is there. I think Mr. DeCoursey makes a really fair point that, you know, that it doesn't mention hardship, and, and I think the, the residents did their homework, and, you know, and made a case for why that might be a fair thing to do. I'm also mindful that the purpose of the two-hour parking in that location is to prevent commuter parking at Alwif, and by definition, this would, you know, this is not, not a concern. That wouldn't, that wouldn't dilute or weaken that in any way. If we do get other requests, I think we would need to, subject to the discretion, but err on the side of being understanding of those. And I think, you know, what would happen would be, there may or may not be room on the street, you know, if, if they were to fill up with other daytime permits. And I'm not necessarily encouraging that. I think the board should retain some discretion about, if we were to vote to do this, about, about doing that. But I'm just kind of pointing out in my, in my thinking that I think it's a reasonable, you know, there's some reasonable parameters that, that would allow us to do this if, if we, if we have board to do that. So I think we do have a motion by Mr. DeCoursey and Mr. Hurd.
And I'll second the motion. Again, similar to what Mr. DeCoursey and Ms. Hillman said is, I mean, the language is pretty clear. And, you know, we've, we have a lot of experience with overnight parking permits. In six years, this is the first one of these that's come up. Yet I think you, you know, if you get the request approved, just know that if all of a sudden, two thousand of your friends and neighbors find out about this, and they ask for it as well, it could, next year, it might not happen. But for now, we have relief that's in our traffic policies, and I don't see a reason to not grant what's laid out before us.
Any further discussion?
I, I would just, maybe this is out of scope for now, but I would like us to kind of maybe review the policy at, at some point, you know, soon, you know, and, and then, yeah. And maybe keep it, I mean, change it or whatever, you know, so, because, because, I mean, and maybe also look at the other streets, I mean, that have these time limits and see, you know, if, if, let's say, the folks aren't working, I mean, from home, but they're in, I mean, a dense building, lots of cars, I mean, and they want to avail themselves of this. Will we say yes or no? I mean, because right now, if the threshold is that you're working, well, let's, maybe the unemployed or, or whatever, you know, and, and now, you know, they, they have two cars, and they don't want the hardship of having to shuffle around, you know. We just, I think we need some way that we are applying this consistently so that it's not looking like we are biased in some way that is less palatable, you know.
So, that's it. Thanks. Thank you. I, I appreciate that. I think for me, it's, thinking back to, I mean, if it's not posted otherwise, you can park on the street during the day in Arlington. You know, that, that, that's the default condition. And I think from, if I were looking at a future permit, I would look at the intent of it, what's the reason behind that two-hour prohibition, you know. So, so, anyway, I think it's, it's a worthwhile discussion, and I think it is good that we were careful with it. But I think we're ready for approval. Mr. Feeny?
Mr. Chair, I would just add that I completed reviewing your parking policies, and can give you a listing of roads that have some semblance of a two-hour parking restriction on.
Very impressive. I would not deny you that opportunity.
You also have a number of one-hour parking restrictions, which I did not include.
I hadn't even imagined.
But there are portions of, and this is all segmented by like, you know, points, one hundred and seventy feet northerly or southerly, but roads that do contain at least some portion under a two-hour parking restriction would be Bailey Road, Broadway, Brooks, Davis Road, Fairmont, sections of Mass Ave, Milton, sections of Park Ave, Rossin, Russell Street, Russell Terrace, Thorndike, and Varnum. So there are a number of East Arlington streets.
Very impressive. I, I promise we were not vamping in order to give the town manager time to do that, but it worked out.
But he appreciates it nonetheless.
Anytime, glad to help. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say, I can see, count to three.
Yes.
So this is something I will support, but I will tell you that I do anticipate lots of people coming in, and I will vote for each and every one of those. And I think anyone who doesn't do that is doing a disservice. Because to me, I want to be able to park when all my neighbors have asked for two-hour parking for commuter, and maybe as Mr. Diggins says, we start to address that issue, because it's inconvenient to move cars out of the driveway. Doesn't make sense. But I can count to three, and I'll go to that, but I'm going to, as a neighborhood activist, let everybody know down there, this is an option that's available to them, and they should go for it. And we should vote for each and every one of them that come in.
Duly noted. Mr. Hurd, did you have something else to say?
I wouldn't be laborious and keep you here until, our meeting has to end by eleven. I would just, just globally, the two-hour parking restrictions there because, to prevent commuters, and it's not there because it doesn't want people to be able to park out in front of the house, just like I can do in front of my house. So it almost, you know, I guess, if everyone in that neighborhood comes out and is granted one of these permits, it, it's like two problems. You know, you're able to sol, still solve the commuter parking problem that was the original reason that you had the two-hour parking, and allow people to park in front of their house, just like people are in other parts of town. So I, I guess, as Mrs. Mahan said, that it actually makes me even feel even better about this request. Even if, in the instance, more people come out and ask for, for permits under this section. That's it, I'm done.
You sure?
Any other discussion? We have another hour and a half, so.
I'm, I'm resisting. So, I mean, I said my piece about the policy review, and so I'm going to stick with that. That's it. Thanks.
Admirable restraint. All right. So on a motion to approve by Mr. DeCoursey and seconded by Mr. Hurd, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So it is four to one vote. Who said you can't make a difference in local government?
Hey, I worked, I worked, I feel like I've seen you at the State House. I worked at the State House for four years.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. All right. Okay, we have item sixteen, discussion and potential vote on the overnight parking pilot program. And I will note that there is some public correspondence that we've had from members of the public regarding the potential extension of this that is in the agenda items and is on Select Board's Agenda and Minutes page online for the public. So I'll turn this over to my colleague, the dear Mr. Diggins.
And because the world runs, or the universe runs on irony, this would come up next.
It certainly does.
I'm sure you're going to know how I'm going to go on this, but I hope you have the, the data in front of you. And so, when the last time I presented this data, we had sixty, you know, people who had availed themselves, you know, of the trial, I mean, and it went up to seventy. Just, just a data point that really means nothing, other than to say that we have seventy people that have, are part of the trial. County, East Arlington is precincts one through seven, and the rest of Arlington is eight through twenty-one. We have thirty-eight in East Arlington and thirty-two in the rest of Arlington, which amounts to fifty-four percent, you know, in the east, and forty-six percent elsewhere, you know. This is a fairly even split, you know. And, and, so I asked the, the chief, you know, to give me data that she thought would be helpful in helping us assess the impact of this, you know. I asked her that, or I said, tell me what data you have, and then I will make the request. I was hoping I'd get the latter, you know, but, but I got the former. And so, for, so for, for her, that was the, the number of tickets that have been issued, and the complaint number. Now, these numbers, I mean, are, are town-wide, you know. And she says the complaint number, you really have to take it with the grain of salt, because, you know, there's, they aren't entered consistently, you know. And, and so, so, and I think anecdotally, I mean, for us getting emails, I got only one, that was against it before, well, during, during the trial, and that was really based on, I mean, someone who had, who lived on Mass Ave and was apparently parking on another street. I mean, I imagine that's because you can't park on, on Mass Ave, you know. And, and also, we, I think one of the things that we did, which I think is a source of tension for me, is that we told people that they need to park, I mean, like, in front of their place or as close to their place as possible, which I think creates this sense of, I mean, that space in front of my house is mine, and it's like, well, it's not, you know. And, and, but, but nonetheless, I understand why we did that. And I would say if we, well, if we review things, I mean, later in a positive light, we might want to take that into consideration. And so I have talked with the town manager, I've talked with Mr. DeCoursey, and I've talked with the chief, I mean, and, and chief especially has said that she would be fine if we froze the number of participants, you know, and then carried this through the spring as another trial to see, I mean, how this works, you know, during winter, because we need to see how people behave when we tell them that they need to get off the street, during a snow emergency, and that would give us a chance to come up with maybe a secondary warning system. Because right now, we send town-wide email to folks, letting them know they have to get off the street. But as the manager said, he thinks it would be not burdensome to create another layer of, of warning to people, I mean, to let them know that they really do need to get their cars off the street, and that they have a space, I mean, that their sticker that they bought gave them a space, I mean, and a lot, so. So, so I feel that freezing this would be in the spirit, I mean, of what we told people regarding the pilot, in that we're not going to continue the trial and allow more people in. We're just going to now take the seventy that we have, and, and base another trial off of that to see how the system works in the wintertime, because I think that's what people are most concerned about. And so if we were to do that, I mean, and I'm thankful that you put potential vote on, because I told you, I didn't want people to feel that they need to make a decision now about whether we do this additional trial later on, is that we'd have to determine how long it would last, whether it was through March, April, or, or longer, you know. But what I would like, if we needed to vote on it, is that we would say, no more people, I mean, in the trial now, because we don't want a rush, you know, into the trial, given that this would be potentially new information, that we're going to allow people who are, who have already signed up, I mean, to, they'll have to pay, you know, more, but to continue through the winter as another trial. That's it. Thanks.
So just to clarify, are you suggesting that we would freeze at the number of current permit holders or at the number of potential spaces, slots for permits that we created originally?
Good question. The number of current permit holders.
Got you. Mr. Hurd?
Well, I will say, in full disclosure, there's now seventy-one.
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two.
Oh, wow.
As of today, and there's one sole permit holder in precinct eighteen. You know, I, I actually, I think, I'd be supportive of letting it continue, and I'm almost hesitant to cap it. And the reason, when I look at these complaints, these complaints aren't about the seventy cars. Because in a given night, if there's seventy people that have permits, there's five hundred cars parked throughout Arlington. If you drive around, there's a lot of areas in Arlington that just don't get ticketed. And I, it seems almost inequitable, especially since now I'm in that group of beneficiaries of this, that, I mean, when, when we put these permits out, we didn't get a rush. And I don't think there's any evidence that if we continue it, that there's going to be a rush for additional applicants. I think everyone, when it snows, we all know, we get pinged, and we have to get, not just overnight, we have to get up, for a snow emergency, we have to get our cars off during the day, too. You have to get your cars off the street if there's a snow emergency. So I, I mean, I think, just in general, there is sufficient notice. I mean, I don't want to go against the recommendation of the chief and what the, you know, what the overwhelming, what the board thinks. I just, I, my inclination was just to kind of let it roll, because I don't anticipate that whether we open up the number of applications or keep, keep capping at seventy-one, that there's going to be an influx of requests. But, I mean, I think what I've learned from the, from the pilot program is that there's not an overwhelming desire for people to go out and get the, the permits. And, and I don't say that as a, as a negative towards the program. I think it shows us that in the past, where people, you know, we've thought that, you know, if we open this up beyond when we used to only grant overnight parking permits in very limited situations, that we, our streets would be flooded with permitted overnight parking vehicles. I, I just don't think that that's what we've seen since the inception of this pilot program. And like I said, you know, up in my neighborhood, people park in the street all the time, every street, all around. And clearly, given that on this list, precinct eighteen has zero permits, they're parking without permits. And periodically, you'll get ticketed, and then, you know, the cars will come off, and they go back out. So I guess, I mean, the sum of what I'm saying is that the people that are participating in the program are, aren't nearly all the, the streets, all, all the cars are parked overnight on our streets, and certainly don't account for the complaints that we see listed there.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Diggins had mentioned, he and I had had some discussions about bringing something to the board, extending the program, and I can, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Diggins, in terms of take the number that are in place right now in December. But we did approve one hundred and twenty-five permits. I, I'm just as comfortable saying up to one hundred and twenty-five permits that gets extended over the next several months, because I, I don't think we're going to have much more activity. We did set that as an upper limit back in, over the summer. So I could, I, I, right now, I might even be leaning towards going up to the one twenty-five. But I, I do think it makes sense to continue through the winter. The feedback I've received has been overwhelmingly positive, with one or two exceptions. And, and I think we did set that number. I know we set it for summer-type, fall-type use overnight, but I think Mr. Hurd makes a good point, and, and we've had a few people added recently. And as long as that spot is tied to a spot in the municipal lot, which the one twenty-five allows us, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. So I don't know if you feel like the difference between seventy and one twenty-five becomes problematic.
Well, I, I feel that I need to circle back, I mean, to the town manager, but especially, I mean, the, the chief, I mean, to see how she feels about it, you know. I, I will say, look, I'm happy to lose this argument, but I need to defend it, you know. And that is, I, I don't know to what extent, I mean, we have a good sense of the demand, because I feel, I have just some anecdotal evidence, I mean, that, I mean, people didn't avail themselves of this because it was limited, I mean, and they, I mean, just didn't want to, in one case, I mean, I know the person felt that they, they were paying for someone else, I mean, paying someone else, like a neighbor or something, for a spot, and, or something, that they would lose it if they took this, and they weren't sure that they'd be able to get it back. I don't know how many people in that, in that, that case. But, but I mean, it would be an experiment, right, if we, if we, we said at this meeting, you know, that you have until, up, or you can, you know, you can sign up, I mean, and we have the cap at, at one twenty-five, I mean, and that's our experiment, you know, one twenty-five, and then we see how this goes. And then if it goes well, we can open it up to, hiring them up to the, up to the limit of people, up to the number of slots that we have in our, in, in our various lots, you know. So, so, so as I said, I'm happy to lose the argument, but I feel that I really do need to check back, with Tom, the town manager and chief.
Yeah, I just would say, I almost interpreted your comments in favor of what I, and I say that because you mentioned that we don't have, have a sense of the demand. Well, if we cap it, we're not going to have a sense of the demand. Well, if we cap it, we're not gonna have a sense of the demand either, and we're not getting any additional data. If we leave additional, say, I'm comfortable leaving it at the 125, and if all of a sudden we have 50 new applicants, then we'll know that there's more demand. But if we tell people that there's no more applicant, that there's no more permits available, then we're not gonna know whether or not somebody would come out. So I think, just from a perspective of knowing what the demand is, and trying to see if, post-pilot, you know, the word's out, and more people are gonna, to go avail themselves of the permits, I think we need to have some, I think the 125 is the correct number, because now we'll know if more people come out next week and say, you know, we want the overnight parking. And if it's 200 people, it's gonna be the first, you know, 50 people to come out to get them. And then, well, we can assess the data in the spring from there, if we want to expand it, or contract it, or get rid of it.
Yeah, and just, Mr. Diggins, to me, the win is extending the program, that the scope, whether it's 70 or 125, getting it through the winter, that's the win. So, and so I wanted to ask you about, you know, feeling comfortable about 70 or 125. But when we first started talking about this, we talked about, we want data, we want to learn more. And I think Mr. Hurd makes a good point, that if we do have that additional capacity that we can offer, and it is a number that we selected previously, perhaps that gives us more information. So I still stand where I am, but I, when you said lose the argument, you won the argument. I feel like you've done a great job with this in extending the program. That's a win.
Yeah, what I meant is lose this argument.
Yeah, on the scope.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but like I said, I just have to defend it, just for the integrity, my sense of integrity.
Since part of the scope suggestion came from my reporter, the police chief, I wonder if the town manager, in open knowledge of that, that's fine, but did you have any thoughts about, or advice to us about the scope, if we extend this?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, though I didn't speak with the chief directly about this, given that Mr. Diggins had engaged the chief in a conversation, I do not believe there would be a significantly meaningful difference between 75 and 125, especially given that 125 at this point is sort of a theoretical figure. We don't know what our actual figure would be. My, you know, chief concern was just finding a way to make it a requirement that these permit holders enroll in Arlington alerts, so that there could be, no such excuse that folks did not know, but it requires folks to opt in with their cell phone numbers, so that we could call, text, email, and let folks know that now is the time to get your vehicles off the road, in hopes of making it so there were no issues during the winter. And I think if I could ask a question while I have the opportunity, is just understanding exactly what date we would be extending. We're through December 31st now, but just to know what that date would be.
Yeah, that's, I think a note to my colleagues is, if someone were to make a motion, we would need to discuss that and, you know, figure that out.
So, just a question, how much further, how much longer?
Yeah.
You know, well, I would say, the minimum of April 30th, just because I was here in 1997, and I remember April 1st. So it would be easy to say, like, three months, March 31st, but that doesn't get us through April 1st. So that's why I say April 30th, you know. But then we're in the throes of town meeting.
Yeah.
You know, and so, so then, do we go, for me, it's either three, four, or six months. Five is just a little odd. I mean, we did five for the pilot trial, because it just took us a while to get to yes, you know. But, so, so either...
I mean, my thought about this is, I'm happy to do this, and speaking of irony, I was one of the, I think, most reluctant to go for this, and I'm glad it's gone well. I would like to make sure that we, I mean, to me, we should extend this long enough to get a good experience, but also to give ourselves some time and space to really evaluate this. And I think for me, that includes soliciting resident feedback, you know, that if we do this for a significant period of time, and then we go back to the neighborhoods and say, "How did this go?" Because right now, we're relying on anecdotal complaints, and there's value in that, but they may not be the complete story. I would also suggest that that would give us some time to do some more rigorous data analysis, that ideally, some cross-tabbing, cross-tabulations of the complaints with the density and the locations of the permits. I mean, that would be a GIS exercise, but that's certainly, potentially, theoretically possible. More work, you know, not in time to do that here. But, you know, if we allow, if we give it enough time, you know, maybe kick this past town meeting, where we're gonna be too busy to really, you know, to really evaluate this, then we could do, ask for resident input, we could do more serious data analysis, we could see what it's like through the entire season. So I'm kind of in for a penny, in for a pound, I guess.
And that sets us up for six months, then, gets us locked in with the fiscal year, you know, we get out of town meeting, you know, sometime in May, you know. So.
So that would go through June 30?
Yeah.
I think we need a motion.
Chairman, I see, I know if Ms. Mar or Mr. Feeney...
Oh, oh, sorry, wait a second. We're just looking for clarity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Of course, before we go.
So the date is helpful, would the same fee structure apply? Just so we know, sort of applying this moving forward.
Yeah, dollar day.
Okay.
Dollar, the dollar a day approach.
Thank you.
Has a nice ring to it, you know.
Dollar a night?
It's...
A night, well, yeah.
Jay.
You just gave them that, you can charge them a dollar a day.
Okay, so who's gonna put this together in a motion?
I will make a motion that we extend the trial, you know, through this, through June 30th of next year, the same rate, pricing, and that, yeah, because, yeah, and the limit is 125, you know, slots.
Second.
So that's June 30th, 2024.
What did I say?
Mr. Poole is 2024.
We've learned to be very careful about the dates these days. That's great.
Sorry, I had this jump. That's...
And that was a second from Mr. De Corsi here. Any further discussion from the board? On a motion from Mr. Diggins and a seconded by Mr. De Corsi, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is unanimous. Thank you for your work, Mr. Diggins.
A pleasure, really.
Okay, now we go to future select board meetings and a couple of other things. So, we currently only have a meeting for December 18th. Now, regarding the time of that, though, we need to do 6 o'clock on the 18th.
Unless the board thinks that it's gonna be a longer meeting.
Yeah.
Maybe set it earlier.
The intent of that is to have a, pretty much a consent agenda, kind of very quick meeting for that day.
It's for the purposes of license renewals.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
All right. And then, so we need to start, then we don't have any meetings scheduled in January, so pick right up, obviously, New Year's is January, the first, Monday is January the first. Do we want to go that first week and go on the Wednesday, or just wait till the 8th?
We should go to that Wednesday. I think for the office's sake, we need that first week. Or no?
No.
Okay.
It's up to the boards.
You guys decide then.
Oh, yeah, but we do appreciate advice.
I'm gonna be...
The 8th would be fine for us, if that...
I was gonna say, I'm gonna be probably out of town on the 2nd into the 3rd.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that is, so, the 8th, is that okay?
Yeah.
I prefer Mondays, but I can...
Yeah, yeah, no, I do, too.
I can mark, work around it.
Yeah. Okay, so we have the 8th, and then, how about the 22nd?
Yes.
That's good, because we have MLK Day on 15th, so that works out pretty well. Okay. And then, two weeks after that would be February the 5th. And then, now, two weeks after that is a holiday, that's President's Day. So we'd have to figure out...
How does 21 look?
21 is fine for me. All right, so we'll do the 21st, 41st then, and that takes us through February.
Do you want to do March?
Yes, do March.
Please.
All right, and so then, March...
Every Monday should be put aside, because we might need it, but you'll probably ask a lot.
Oh, because we'll be in warrant articles, yeah.
You just don't know. I mean, so what, regardless of...
Start with two.
Let's start with two.
Regardless of what we choose, I'll just put it aside every Monday.
Set it aside, and then we just fill agendas.
Yeah, that's true. I like that, I like Mr. Hurd's thinking here. All right, so, I'm sorry, the latest one in February was the 20...
1st.
21st. All right, so how about March 4th and the 18th?
Sounds good.
Okay.
And I'll just be here by myself about the days.
That's right.
You also want to just, I mean...
We have to do the April 1st.
Oh, we have to do April 1st, yeah.
At least the April 8th.
We have to, because that's...
I have it written down as that, so at least the 8th.
May as well. But, you know, we're gonna have to do, we have to do April the 8th, because that's the, right after the town election.
Yeah, it's the first Monday.
Yeah, I know. Oh, yeah, boy, that came up quick. All right. Okay, we good on this? Thank you, colleagues. Okay, so now we have items, 18, new business, correspondence received, crosswalk request on Broadway near the MBT, a bus stop. Motions or discussion?
So, I will make a motion to...
Yes, please.
To send the bus stop to the town manager, and I will just let the town manager know that we have dealt with that issue, and in the last three or four years. So there's probably some history of it, you know, and I can maybe get that to you, but just, it's not new, you know. So that's it.
Second.
All right, any discussion, further discussion? So we have a motion to refer to the town manager by Mr. Diggins, a seconded by Mr. Hurd, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much. Okay, new business, accepting cases of emergency, the board will neither deliberate nor act upon topics presented in new business. Ms. Mar?
No new business, thank you.
Attorney Cunningham.
No new business, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Feeney?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Ms. Mahan?
I've had my fun, no new business.
Mr. Hurd?
No new business.
Mr. De Corsi?
I'm sorry, I'm breaking the streak.
It's a good thing we're not playing...
I'm not gonna have another opportunity to do this. And I have to do it because of timing, so it's, I have the latest double poll figures, and we had 80 on May 1, we're now down to 58. In November of 2020, there were 149 in town, so we're down to 58. I do still have some questions on the completeness of the list, and I talked to Mr. Feeney several months ago, and I'm gonna follow up with him again, to perhaps schedule a meeting with Verizon, but if this, this certainly is a very positive trend. I will note, I did receive word from Mr. Schlickman about a double poll in Chestnut Street that he says is a doozy, so we'll be sure to follow up on that. But down to 58, so that's progress.
Good job.
I would congratulate you if that did not constitute deliberation, but I think it doesn't, in my, in the judgment of the chair. Mr. Diggins?
I'm not having any business.
And I do not have any new business. That concludes our regular business. We now are going to move to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation against Eltron Incorporated. And I'd solicit a motion and suggest perhaps that that motion include the provision to adjourn this meeting at the end of the executive session. Traditional nominator?
I'd like to move that we go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. Such a discussion in public would be detrimental to the select board and the town, and that when we adjourn out of executive session, we will come out into public session to also adjourn. I can't talk.
Does that work?
It does, thank you.
Okay, need a second for that?
A second.
Okay. And it's a roll call vote for this, right?
Yes.
All right. So, a motion to move to executive session and then to adjourn thereto, by Mrs. Mahan, a seconded by Mr. Diggins. Mr. Attorney Cunningham, if you would call the roll.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Diggins?
Yes.
Mr. Hellmuth?
Yes.
Five zero, unanimous.
We are in executive session.